Good evening. We will call this meeting of the Timas Select Board to order on Thursday, September 8 at 6:00 PM. We are meeting earlier tonight to dive into our ARPA presentation. So we'll start with Holly and then we will, once we finish ARPA, we'll move into our regular agenda. So hi, thank you for coming.
Hi.
We got a big fat packet from your team. Thank you.
Yeah. And hopefully everybody has had time to bruise it. And you read my cover letter.
Yes, yes, I was waiting for you to tell us how you wanted to spend it.
I sent it to you.
We, I didn't see.
No, I sent it to Kathy.
Oh, I didn't get it.
I sent it. Boom.
You sent it boom. Well, maybe you have.
I mean, I have it here if anybody. I just said, you know, for chuckles, I just figured out how I would spend the money because I'm one person. And, you know, so I, I figured out, you know, they can send me to Washington DC and I'll bounce the budget. Just, you know, let me be one voice and.
There you go.
Choose how to spend money.
There you go.
For the day. I mean, if you want to see it, I mean, seriously, I have it here.
I'd be happy to look at it. I, I feel like, you know, you sat in and all the meetings and we didn't. So that gives you more knowledge than perhaps we have.
It was just, you know.
All right. I will share this, which is a summary of what we received in a spreadsheet because that's the way my brain works.
I love it.
And I can add and subtract and I'm not suggesting necessarily that we're going to make decisions, but this really, you know, there were, for example, one, you know, three elements to tree work and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Oh, my whole thing shifted. Sorry. Anyway, you know, so this just lays it out line by line.
Yeah.
And I made four.
Fifty.
And you know, that was, that was the age. All of a sudden I needed bifocals. It was like turned over on my birthday. One minute, there's two there.
You had it on five and I need one.
You didn't look.
Yep. So we have plenty now.
And, and my.
That's my spreadsheet.
Okay.
So overnight, I can't see.
It is.
All right. So here's what Holly likes. She likes.
Um, I was, what I was trying to do was make everybody happy, which means you make absolutely nobody happy.
Make everybody little happy.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Um, at the $175,000, the committee was in total agreement that we would suggest that you keep $25,000 aside in case of something like terrific coming up for an idea or something totally disastrous happens and you need some money. Of course, you twenty six, but at least you can have a little bit of a splash fund. I wouldn't call it that and reserve fund. Well, going up for flushies. So, you know, I, I cut everybody down except for the old creamery. And I have since learned that they probably need a whole lot more money than that. But like, somebody had suggested MREs. I had originally said 2,000 and then they said, oh, we need twice as many meals. So then I put 4,000. So then I went back to 2,000. I know one of the big things is in debate is about spending money for the salt and sand. The person who had suggested it, the committee said, you know, a lot of money over years. And so I said, well, if we take $6,000 instead and do it over four years, it's not as much as they had requested. But that would give the taxpayers saying, oh, we're giving, you're getting a little bit of a break. Recreation, I just did like the bare minimum kind of things. But this, this was just my personal opinion. This is not coming from the committee. I was just playing around with how you could play with it. But.
Well, thank you. Um, and I took what you gave us and added in the other things that we were given. And I don't know if you have seen those Gail had some others that were.
What Teresa's?
Teresa's, which on my sheet, and I apologize, my headings, I had to add one more line in there. So they're all now all off by a row. So the total that we got from your team was 305,890 and Gail had. That doesn't make sense that it doesn't add up, but anyway. Cybersecurity 2570 on demand generator. I just put 2,000 in there, 10,000 in there. And then Teresa's requests, I put over to the right because I don't think towns can actually hold lotteries. And I think they're interesting ideas. I think she could do some of them through the community fund, but I set them to the side because if you add them all up, you know, then it's another thousand dollars. So.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Teresa was never able to be in person at our committee. And I, did she make it one or two meetings?
She made one by phone.
One meeting by phone. So we never really got to interact with Teresa and because she kind of came up with some things that she'd been thinking about on her own.
Comments, questions?
The other thing is, is my committee and very, if I'm wrong, let me, let, let me know. But basically said, what we think our job is done. Here you go.
There you go.
You guys have to decide how you're going to do this. And I made the observation that I heard on public Vermont public that some of the towns in, in the state had been, had put it back to the voters on how they would spend the money. Um, and then Kathy said, well, how would we do that? Cause we don't have town meeting anymore. It would either be up or down. I thought, well, yeah, okay, we could have it up or down. This is what we're suggesting. And you can vote it up. My thing was, is that way the town folk feel like they have input. And it, rather than having just a handful of people literally making the decision, if you put it back to the voters, then they at least feel like they have some ownership in it. And that was not unanimous decision. It was one person who abstained from that vote, but or did maybe voted no.
She voted no.
She noted voting no.
Let the record reflect.
But once again, that was, but the committee, the vote was that we put that forth and to the select board.
There you go. I will remind us all that we do not need to make any decisions. However, if there is a desire to vote, I'll point out that we have November, which I believe we have to warn by September.
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, I'm just laying it out for you. Or town meeting, which is Saturday before the first Friday, blah, 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 right? Or the sorry second.
Town meeting is on March 7.
March 7.
Which is the second, the first Tuesday?
That's the first Tuesday. I will have to check and see if we still have to do it on that Saturday.
The information maybe, yeah. Anyway, so it's several months away and we have time to think.
Informational meeting could be on Saturday.
Yeah. Um, I would point out that we have included the town multiple times already. Not to, you know, just, I was the one who said to Holly, like, you can't say, here's how Holly wants to spend it. And here's how Meadow want, you know, and like, we don't have that ability. We can vote it up or down. I think there's some things and for me personally, like cybersecurity, that I would like to move on right now. It's a small ticket item. It's something we know we need to do. I think we should just do that. I'm not necessarily ready to make decisions on anything else. I personally don't believe in funding line items with one time money. So I'm, you know, not super excited about the salt and sand measure. And I see you cut it down. So that's fine. You know, so there's obviously a lot of work that could be done here.
Yeah.
I'm curious how you guys feel about the best way to get additional input, be it a vote or another meeting or us, you know, throwing ideas, a survey, a some, you know, a some, you know, we send people something in the mail. We do something online, you know?
Yeah.
We could spend a lot of time on this.
I feel like we have more structure thanks to this committee. And if we wanted to have a special meeting just to discuss it, like a town hall, go through the options that have been presented or something like that, but I don't feel ready to vote on anything other than cybersecurity either.
I just, one of the things I would like to have looked into was doing a bomb demand generator for this building.
Did you end up getting a quote for that or you couldn't?
Well, in the one from stubbins, it's like one I got from MC4 and he has everything locked together. So I have to have him break it out.
Okay. Do you, I think that could be another item or that could be this, right? Cause I believe the electrical upgrades were like sort of the creamery, sort of the town office and sort of the generator.
I've got stubborn to go on. Give me an estimate on three things. One is upgrading the hundred amp
Service.
To 200.
Yep.
Which is what we probably need to do right now. It's in the closet, which is probably legal when it was done, but it's not anymore.
Yeah.
And so if we want to run power to your primary, you know, that's another four or 5,000. This is four or 5,000. If you want to do the on demand generator, it's
Well, since this building has been deemed the emergency, I don't know what you want to call it. What was it? Command center? And God forbid it loses power. And no one is in town from the department to run that big generator over here. Which very well could happen because if it's an emergency situation, we're probably going to be out dealing with other stuff. Anyway. So having a generator here, I think would be a good idea.
Just a personal aside. I would have no trouble personally, just one person in town, changing the salt and sand to the generator.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
I'm just saying.
Yep.
But the salt and sand did come from somebody in the community. There were people who were on my ARPA committee who thought it was a great idea. Once again, you know, we're talking about herding cats. So I'm doing the best I can, you know?
Thank you. Cat herding. So would you guys like to review the bids that Gail has later in the agenda?
I'm still waiting for one more.
She's still waiting for one more.
Well, can we do it next meeting?
Yeah.
And if I could just interject here is I checked online today and we only got another 31,000 for ARPA money. And I was expecting another 88 because we're supposed to have 178 altogether. So I have to do some research to find out why we didn't get our other half. So you might not be able to spend.
We might have 119 instead of 175.
So before you start spending, just be aware.
Yeah.
There might not be.
It's not in the bank.
The generator was your piece. Are you happy to wait till next month to?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But it's just something I think we should seriously consider.
All right. So two decisions I would love to have. One is, do you want to have a, how do you want to do the community piece? Do we want to like have a meeting in October and invite the committee, the community? Do we want to spend more time on this as a board and then invite the community? Like where's the commu? You know, do we want to try to figure out?
I think we should, I think we should spend time narrowing this down on our own and then do it. Meeting, the community meeting.
So maybe November. Yeah. December, January, one of those months. We get busy into budgeting in those months just.
Right. But there is stuff. There's stuff on here that.
Well, we can't afford it all. That's all you need to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would be willing to entertain a motion to approve the cybersecurity for the cost that was quoted 2570. If folks are on board with that. Yeah. Thing is how we have been talking about this for about four.
We have gone through this. Yeah. I would make a motion that we approve cybersecurity at the amount of $2,570.
Any discussion on paper?
Hi.
And let's put this. I would suggest I can send people, I'll fix this spreadsheet. I can send this to people so they can do what Chair Holly did if they want. And so maybe to get your own list and, and hopefully Gail will give us an update on what our total balance is before our October.
And I think after November may be better. We might have more information for ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah. We might.
So I just have one question.
Yes.
So can I now get back to my committee and say, thank you for your service. We are done?
I think, I think they told us they were done already. Yes, I think you can.
That was their suggestion, but I just want to make sure that you, I mean, if you want the committee to do something more, I need to pull them together and.
I think the main thing that we would like their support on is when we do have the community input thing, whatever it is, a vote or a meeting or that they
Yeah.
help us rally citizens to participate.
And then maybe they could have some input too, as to how and why they.
Come up with what we did.
Yeah.
I imagine it more as an informational meeting about a decision that is likely to be made.
Right. And I mean, we could, you know, play that game again, give everyone, you know, $131,000 worth of little stickies and they could put it all around and yeah, I mean, this is where it would be nice if we could have a meeting where we could actually make a decision.
Yeah.
As a community, but we can't.
Right.
And I would love to try something. Maybe it's before though. I mean, maybe we'll get like really finalized and we'll have a nice consensus, maybe not a hundred percent, but pretty close. And then we could put it to the voters in on March 7.
That sounds good.
Anybody else have anything on ARPA? Anything on ARPA for you? Are you set?
Just one other thing, maybe we should think about a little bit. I completely forgotten about it until our power was out for eight hours the other night. And so we had no telephone. The backup batteries run out of juice. And so I don't know if there's, you know, not everybody has cell phones.
Right.
Which was Michelle Bate's advice as well. Just have everybody have cell phones.
Yeah. And then you can get in your car and drive somewhere and make it work.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that.
We had discussed it in the past and didn't come to any real conclusion, but I think it needs some thought needs to be given. I'm not sure. We have more people here too. So we should probably say hello to Frank.
I was going to say, I just noticed that Frank is there.
And again, I think that comes back to this being your epicenter for disaster.
We put a card.
Phone.
Like a cord phone in there, like a phone box. Public phone, phone is a cord. I think there's still some.
Is there no corded phone here? Is that what you're saying?
The corded phone isn't going to help you.
Doesn't help. It's the.
Battery is driven by, the line is driven by the battery.
No, no, I'm just talking about a phone. So if somebody needs to use a phone.
But it won't be able to talk to anything.
Optic now. So there's no copper lines. In the olden days when the power went out, your phone worked because it was a separate copper line. Those have gone away. It's fiber optic. It's on a battery. The battery is supposed to last up to eight hours. So if you're out of power, you can at least call for help. But after eight hours, if you're out of power for 10 hours, you can't call the fire department and say, hey, my house is on fire. You've got to jump in your car and drive someplace.
Well, I got it. I got a generator.
Right. And if you get a generator here, then that would solve.
If we have a generator here, that that would solve the problem.
It automatically comes on. I think I get rid of my dryer before I got rid of my conveyor.
One other thing that just occurred to me before we move on is that we had a real estate transaction in here as a potential. And I think we'll probably talk about that in executive session, but we may come back to ARPA depending on
Right.
how we, that comes out.
Am I? Am I done?
You are unless, one second, would anyone on the phone like to speak about ARPA and welcome to
Yes.
Todd, Nancy, Paul, Frank and Cherry.
I would like to speak. This is Todd.
Hey Todd.
Um, I don't have whatever spreadsheet you all are looking at. And I don't know what the justifications that the ARPA committee had for the different proposals. That was part of their mission. So I'm wondering what the process is going to be for sharing this information with the community.
Our, our directives, this is Holly, Chair of the ARPA Committee. Our directives was to get the research and give it to the select board. So I don't know how this select board is going to take what we've done, but it was many, many pages.
Mostly it was they came up with dollar numbers for the proposed projects, Todd. I can email you. Email what you want.
And then okay, the minutes from six, nine, say the committee is supposed to provide justification for each request.
Right.
Yeah, there's a packet.
Many narratives for each.
Each option.
But the committee did not, the committee did not create a list of only spending 175,000. They just provided the select board with information about each project, why it should happen. And if it was ongoing expenses and that for the select board, they needed to decide. I can send you, email you that packet.
Yep. And I'll send you the. I'm sending you the spreadsheet that we're looking at. Um, it's a really big word document, maybe 10 or 15 sides, 20 pages. So I think probably to Todd's point, which is an excellent one, we should put it in the minutes. Anyone who would like to see the poll report, please notify the town clerk and Todd would like to see the full report. So email that to him. And if you want to send the spreadsheet as well, Gail, I think that's fine for people like me who think that way. So.
Yeah. Understanding that this is, this is what the ARPA committee is presenting to the select board. It is not.
Right.
No decisions are being made on it. It is just.
Right. Um, that, uh, just to support what Holly has said, the committee did work very hard and there, there is a fairly comprehensive report. Um, and what I did was I took, you know, we had, for example, from the fire department, maybe seven or eight different requests. So I pulled those out into lines with the dollar amount. So the spreadsheet that I have is, you know, 20 lines long, maybe, or maybe even more. And it totals 315,000. And then Teresa had other ideas that were another more than 300,000. So altogether it was 651,794. Which does not include anything for updating the town plan or real estate transaction, which were also not on the ARPA committee's list, but came in kind of from the planning commission in this library. So there you go. All right. I will send you this email now. And then at least you'll see it. Anybody else who's on the phone have questions or comments on ARPA, which is what we're focused on now.
Hi, this is Nancy and I'd also love to receive the email. Thank you.
Anybody, everybody else good? Not? Okay. Okay. Just one second. I have to open the document, attach it and.
Hi Holly, thank you.
Holly, this is the most fun in town and you're leaving, but we completely understand. Thank you so much. All right. It is now, I can't read that, six.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight. And we will move into our select board meeting. Welcome again, everyone. We will start by reviewing the agenda and we do have a number of guests and it is helpful for us to understand if you have a specific item you would like to comment on, in which case we could move it to the front, if that was interesting. We also have a citizens input section, which comes very soon, right after the minutes. So anybody have something you'd like to speak to us about, or is this just the most fun thing in town? I'm asking Holly first and you folks on the phone are next.
Oh, I might have some comments on.
Okay. Anybody on the phone? Hi Frank, nice to see your smiling face. You're on mute, Frank, if you're trying to say something to us.
This is the hottest ticket in town tonight. So I'm just here listening.
All right. Nancy or Todd, anything else, anything from either of you?
Not for me, Nancy. Oh, well, yes, I actually do have a question for you.
Are you looking at the agenda? Is it going to come up in a good order? Or do you want to come in on citizens input or?
Um, I don't, I'll stay for the meeting. So whenever, it doesn't matter to me. It can wait.
Okay. And Paul, how about you?
I'm just waiting for my turn.
On the constable discussion.
It's on the constable discussion way down there. It is quite likely that you will be not coming up for just your item for about an hour. Would you like us to move it forward or are you happy to stay? Because it's so interesting.
I'm happy. I'm to have that just agenda for me.
I would ask that those of you on the phone go on mute unless you're speaking, just in case your phone rings or someone starts talking to you and we get feedback from that. So if there are no changes, we will review the minutes. I had one comment. The title says electrical bid for pole to building. I think to make it a little clearer, we might want to say electrical bid, pole in, electrical run from pole to building. Just didn't make sense to me. And I found a spelling mistake.
You get the prize. It was a chance to see if anybody could find it.
You know where it is. Under warranty. Uh, the building is warranted, which is T E D.
Okay, it's from at school.
Any other comments, corrections?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, any discussion on paper? I. All right. We will move on to citizens input. Do we have any? This is the point in the meeting, for those of you who aren't regulars, where citizens can speak in general. We try to move as quickly through our agenda as we can, and we don't generally take comments from the public. So this is a good time to say your piece, if you have a piece to say.
Just a quick.
Uh, let's have Frank first and then Todd. You have three minutes.
I have, um, I've got probably half a dozen old school desks in the back of my truck from the West School here on this side of town. Where would you like me to drop them off to? Over to the office? Okay. I'll have them over there tomorrow.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Susan Sargent, Tom Peters donated them. They bought the old schoolhouse and we're able to see them.
Well, thank you, Frank. Todd, you had some input for us?
Uh, yeah, I would like to speak in favor of the detailed minutes that we've been getting. And there's been several notes in the minutes the select board wanted less detailed minutes. I think it's helpful for people that don't attend the meetings, um, to have detailed minutes to look at.
Thank you for your feedback. Anybody have anything they'd like to share with Todd on that subject?
I know, I think that's something that. My part, discuss it another time.
Okay, any other citizen input? If you have input, personal comments about anything, this is when you say them. Because in general, we don't take public comments during the meeting.
I just didn't know. Have you yet? I will look at it. Well, something needs to be done because. On the list, well, it needs to be pretty quick because you're not much, not so.
Okay, you have a lot more time if you would have anything else you'd like to share. Anyone else? Public comments? Alrighty, Public Works Project update. Um, maybe you want to just give us an update from your point of view and then Eric, and then we'll talk about Morton Buildings' payment.
Um, slab's all poured.
Saw that, thank you.
We're working on that doing around the edges so that Morton can get around the building to work on it. Not if, when they show up. Um, conduits are in, water lines in, drainage is in. So we've got a little bit of tune-up left. We probably got another day to get rough graded around the building and Morton can have it.
And, um, who, someone's coating the, it's something, a part of the slab that's exposed, that foam that's sticking out? They own that?
There, yes, their drip edge.
Comes down.
Their drip edge comes down the wall, over the foam and down into the dirt. It's an aluminum drip cap. So yes, that's on their scope.
Perfect. Other questions?
Septic bank is ordered. That was a whole nother thing.
Thank you for the thing.
Smaller size?
Yeah, what's that? 1500.
Great.
It's especially, it's special. They have to make it. It's, I saw the shop drives, I approved shop drives, said, send it. Thank you. Now, please.
And I think that's pretty much your last task, right?
We have, uh, we have some cleanup to do and we got to do the pond, um, that little pond. So I'd like to get, um, out of creek out to look at everything before we start putting any finishes on, because now it's easy to adjust things around. But, um, the pond is really, what's that?
Good luck with that.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, we got time now. I mean, the pot, the pipe is, the pipe that goes into the pond is there, so.
Um, do you want me to chase him to get an appointment? Um, Monday through Thursday?
I haven't called him yet, so I can, I'll, I'll try first.
Okay.
And then.
Yeah, I mean, he, he was on vacation, which isn't actually a great excuse, because he should have had some kind of notification about that, but.
I will try Monday or around and just give an appointment with him to have him come out. Do some shots and see if like if he likes everything, because his, I mean, our grade depends on his stormwater permit.
Right.
Because he's got it going different ways than it ever did before. So I just want to make sure he goes, yeah, I love it. And.
Right.
We're happy. But, but I will do that.
And, um, you figured out the pump and, uh, that whole thing with Parker was a chase if I was seeing that correctly?
It's so.
It's all, thank you.
I'm gonna say.
Right then.
It was a lot of hoops to jump through.
Yeah. Um, questions from?
No, that.
Okay. Um, Morton Buildings' next payment. Um, we got a bill.
For $92,000.
For $92,000.
Somebody need to sign, it's a, I don't know.
And, um.
Rick called me last week to find out um, if he could get paid. I said, well, I think I'm going to wait as long as it took you to provide the information.
Yeah.
And it was dead silence.
Can we post it in the chat?
I think we're under contract to pay it, so.
We absolutely are. Um, and the last I heard, and maybe you've heard from him more recently, is they're slated to, their panels are supposed to hit here middle of the month.
He said, he, last I talked to him, it was the week of the 19th. But that doesn't necessarily.
That means the panels are being delivered or the crew's showing up for both?
That means the building is getting delivered.
Yep.
So we're trying to get enough room.
Yeah.
Between the buildings so that we can all work together.
Yeah.
Because there's power line on the other side where the logical place to set those down and be out of everybody's way, well, there's a power line. We're all going to be jammed in. But yes, supposedly we do the 19th, and then I don't know. He said his crew had two other jobs to do before they got here. So. Maybe they're small jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully it's mine.
All right. Um, we have a note here, Parker Water Wells, pay, question mark.
I didn't know. I mean, we haven't paid him for the well, and I didn't know we were supposed to wait until we put the pump in before we paid him, or if we could pay him.
Absolutely, I think we can pay.
The pump thing straightened out.
Yeah, all I gotta do is, there's no power to, obviously there's no power to it. All they gotta do is hang one of their thing and pump in and all of everything else.
They decide how deep they don't put it?
Yes.
You want a motion on that?
Yes.
Is it gonna hit them?
It's gonna be.
All right, anything else on the Public Works Project update? If not, we'll move on to highway update.
Um, let's see. Shoulderings all done. They came the other day and finished that. They got their 15 parts to fix them. They had to make the parts with a mixer machine that's been by. Um, so that's all done. Should be ready for Morton next week. And once that project is done, then we can get back to doing our real job. Other than that, don't have a lot for you. I'm planning on being out of town the weekend of 26th, so.
September?
Yep. But Ronnie, Ronnie says that he doesn't think he's going out west, so we still should have to be.
Okay, we'll want to, um, get him to commit to whatever his vacation is going to be, so we can make sure we have backup. And I, I, he and I talked about that one day when he happened to be out in my, my, in my dooryard. Um, and he said, yeah, maybe I'll do some hunting or something. And I'm like, yeah, you, you need to figure this out. We can't be surprised.
Agreed.
Yeah, and it can't be when we need to plow snow. Or, I mean, I guess it could be, if Glenn's willing to, yeah, Glenn's willing to fill in, but yeah. Um, okay, there's a list here for you, stormwater reports. Were you able to get any of those?
Uh, not yet. Nope, I'm still working on it.
And is that a Stephanie issue, or what's the issue?
Have to connect with her and see which.
Okay.
See what I did wrong. The grant's the same thing. It's the same problem. I didn't, uh, I haven't upgraded that section on the, the grant is for channel roll, correct? That's what we're talking about with that grant.
No, the tap grant is assault and sand shed.
Oh, okay, never mind that.
I know. You might want to change this item to salt and sand, just because you and I know that it's transportation alternatives program.
I did it someplace, but I didn't do it on.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think it was in the minutes that I clarified.
Yeah. Um, that would be great, just to sort of get a, an update on where you, I know you've done a lot.
Yeah.
And I think we're probably ahead of the game, but you know, we do have annual goals and it'd be good to just get an update on that.
Yeah, I gotta just have a minute to get with her and then we're both sitting at a desk and.
Right.
Doesn't happen very often.
Yeah, well, there you go. Um, so the grant update for the salt and sand shed, which is on here, is tap update.
The good news is, we're not alone trying to get recognized of being a town and other towns, towns, folks out there, there's been also fighting since April and June to get recognized. And I'm still waiting to answer back some of my incident reports, because you're not supposed to create more than one after.
So for those of you who don't know, in, I believe, April of this year, we were technically awarded a $300,000 grant. And we're still waiting for the grant paperwork, because there is this process that towns have to go through to register in a federal system. And as Gail just mentioned, the town of Tinmouth and 10 or 12 other towns are not being recognized by the federal government. So we can't get our paperwork. So we can't move forward with our planning. So we're just stuck in it. April, May, June, July, August, September, we're now six months in. Yeah, so that's the update. Um, roadside right-of-way wood policy. I think you were gonna do research on that, Gail. Um, just because you're here, Hollis, I would love to ask you. Um, we were asked what, uh, the policy is, and there was some conversation around landowner has seven days to remove it, and then others can, or like, no one's done the research, so.
Well, my understanding what it was is technically they have seven working days to do it. My philosophy is, it's, it's their wood. You know, if, if need be, set it out of the right of way. They can come get it when they want to come get it. To me, I can't see inbound or out of it, because it is their wood. I mean, if you got, some people aren't going to be able to move it in seven days, and how much wood are you talking about? The common sense thing for me is just, you know, set it out of your way for mowing or whatever, out, out of the right of way, then it's their problem to do it. That makes the most sense to me. That's the way we've always done it.
Well, the question was asked, and it turns out there might need to be some statute on that, which we need to do the research on, so.
I think.
Thank you for the update.
I think I read it before, but I mean.
Yeah.
You know, it's a common sense thing that there's wood.
There you go. Um, Reynolds Fontaine driveway permit, and I will step aside. I will just tell you all that, um, Doug and I own 11 point something acres um, behind the cemetery on Route 140. And there, I believe, is a piece, there's a piece of the survey on the following page. So right where that pullover is, at the east end of the cemetery, we have a little piece. We have like 37 feet on the road, and then there's 11 acres in the back. And we're going to sell that to Denise McGinley. And, uh, so you can see on this map. Yeah, I'm, I'm now the, I'm the applicant now. Okay, sorry.
That's what Stan used to do.
That's fine. Do you have it, Ronnie?
Yeah, yeah.
So you can all see, uh, we have a little bit of a right of way from the cemetery, so that there's one curb cut on 140, so her driveway will come out right where that parking lot is. So that's what we're asking.
So her driveway is going to come out where?
Here.
This is the one here. So this is the little pullover?
Yes.
And it's gonna join the pullover right there, because otherwise it would be another road cut here, which is not great, uh, traffic, you know.
Correct.
Visibility-wise, et cetera.
Eric, do you have any comments on it?
No, it was tough to get the sightlines on there, and that's why we had to pull it the way we did. But other than that, I think it's gonna be fine. It's gonna be just like pulling out of the cemetery.
I included the map just because I thought it helped.
Yes, it's, this is where you ask him if he has any conditions he wants to put on.
Do you have any conditions, Eric, that you want to put on?
I don't think so. I think the brush is clear. And I don't, we decided we need a culvert there.
You said no culvert, because it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, it doesn't have one now.
Doesn't have one now.
So yeah, no, I don't have any conditions.
Kevin, do you have any comments?
Yeah, no.
The only reason we want to get it now in case a miracle happens and Dan Howard decides to show up. He said, I'll get to it the 10th week in December.
The 10th week in December, that's clever.
Yeah, like I was saying, case a miracle happens, yeah, we just started there while going.
I just got a comment that as, as long as it still slopes away from the road, if he builds the driveway up where the water's coming in now, if he's gonna back up next to driveway, long as it stays low and also the water can go across it, rather than build up and dump out the road. I don't know how much you're planning on building the driveway up, just so it doesn't trap water.
We're coming out to that, you're utilizing the existing slope gas.
Existing.
Right.
Curb cut, yeah.
Right.
What I would expect, you probably don't push the gravel on there to make it a little more sturdy, because you don't have traffic on it.
I think it's gonna be lower than the Parker one. I think it'll be a little, the way that rain tips off there.
Yeah.
Just a little.
You want to make a motion?
Make a motion to grant the driveway permit.
Uh, I will second that. Any discussions?
No.
Right, there are none. All those in favor? I.
Little boxes inside. If something's needed or not needed.
Nothing is needed, right?
Oh, sorry. Gave you my hat, that's right.
All right.
How much your driveway permits now? Thousand?
Only for the slickboard chair.
Thousand dollars. Uh, anything else for Eric? Highway.
The, Kevin need to sign it?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Nothing else for highway? All right, Paul, you are up. I would like to ask you to, uh, if you would like to ask a question, um, keep your comments, uh, brief if possible, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Okay, first thing I want to say, I was a constable in town for four years, and I'm very grateful for that. And I have spoken with various people in town. And I know TLC wants all the training and all that, but all I ask to be just, just a deterrent in town. I don't need the training, just to be a deterrent, would, would, would make a huge difference. Just to be there, just for people that are, be a nuisance. It would make a big, big help in town.
Um, we also, uh, Paul received a letter from the Criminal Justice Council of the Vermont Police Academy notifying us of all the requirements for having a constable.
Yes, I understand.
You've seen that? Yep.
Yes. But I'm saying the select board could vote for me, just to be a deterrent in town without all the training and everything. And most of the training is free.
The issue with, um, our having a constable is the required, um, insurance and training. And the insurance is, um, not something we budgeted for, and it is significant.
Right, but you're paying $20,000 a year for a sheriff to be there 16 hours a month. And don't say I'm wrong, because I know I'm not. I'm not asking for the double training. I'm just asking to be in town as a deterrent. And you can provide that if you want to, through the select board.
Actions. Doesn't mean by being able to.
I, um, you clarify a little bit what actions you're suggesting that you would provide as a.
Deterrent.
Deterrent.
Yes, to be in town with a constable sign on the side of my truck. And have people that are flying through town and stuff that will slow down and protect people and families in Timmish. That's all I ask.
It's my understanding that you can't really pick and choose. You either have a constable or you. It's my understanding that you can't really pick and choose. You either have a constable or you don't. And if you have a constable, you're required to have all these qualifications, all this training and we're required to ensure you. And.
But the select board can make a decision if they want to fully certify me or not.
I I don't think we have a choice to not fully certify a constable, which is why we, I believe, as a town voted. To have the select board appoint constables and the select board decided not to appoint constables because we had not budgeted for it. And we have the state police.
And we're already paying.
You have the state police. But they take eight to ten hours to get up there. If I'm in town, I'm available twenty four seven. Whatever you need. And it's not gonna cost you twenty thousand dollars a year to have a sheriff that's there sixteen hours a month.
How much is the insurance?
You know how much the insurance was?
Oh, their gun carrying, can't carry a gun. Um, but we voted not to have law enforcement and he's proposing to do law enforcement of some sort. He might not be writing tickets, but.
Right. Can you uh remind us when that vote was?
Back when Bob Emrick was the constable, I think. It was several years ago.
So um Paul, Gail is reminding us that uh. The select board of the town, I think the town actually voted at a town meeting. Um, not to have law enforcement. So in order for us to have law enforcement, the towns. For constables, uh the town would have to vote again is what Gail is saying.
Right.
If somebody needed the state police and you were in town, you couldn't go there because you can't do law enforcement. It's my.
But but I but I could be a deterrent to slow things down, is what I'm saying. Just just the title of constable in town. Slows a lot of stuff down just to say, hey, he's a constable. We can't, we're not gonna do this. We're not gonna do that. It's just the title alone makes a difference.
I don't understand. I don't think you can split hairs like that, Paul. I think you have a constable who provides law enforcement or you don't and we don't.
Right, but I was constable in town for four years. With no authority, but dog, I'm I'm deputy animal control officer, but just having that name, that title. And and being in town made a big difference.
But if you have that title. If you have the title.
It's just not an option. We can't.
I don't think you can have that title without the training.
Or the insurance.
For the insurance.
But.
But I did for four years before. What's a different sound?
We could do some research.
Okay, take it under and back. Makes sense. We'll do some research.
Oh, there's Rick Smersky.
I would also.
No, even if I don't have the full authority, just the title of being around town was that title. Makes a huge.
We need to look into the the insurance part of it.
Right, but also it's I believe it's it it. It's a it's a it's an ask of the select board that we can't give you because the town. Voted on it to not have.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, not have a citizen. With the title of constable. So it would have to be voted on by the town again. So you could. Write a petition to the town to vote on it again.
Okay, but I'm I'm not.
On it again.
Okay, but I'm not trying to step on no toes. But you're paying a sheriff twenty thousand dollars a year that serves you sixteen hours a month. Where's a common sense play a role there? It's not gonna cost you twenty thousand dollars a year to even train me.
Yeah, it's more than that. It's it's more time than that.
I thought it was eight hours a week.
Paul, it's ten hours a week that we hired a sheriff for.
Ten hours a week, big deal. Twenty thousand dollars a year for ten hours a week. I'm here twenty four seven.
All right. If I could inject, if I could inject for a minute.
Yeah.
We had, we had.
Give you one minute.
We had addressed, we had addressed this uh a while back. I jot down this, I had looked it up previously. If we go to Vermont statutes, Title twenty four. Chapter zero five five. Section nineteen thirty six A. It runs through the constable's powers and qualifications and what a town and the select board can do and cannot do. Um in contracting a constable, what levels they can contract on a constable for duties to be done. I would suggest that you folks look at that once again. Uh before you move on further consideration here.
Yeah, so I think I hear a motion to table this to our next meeting and ask our select court assistant to do some research unless someone else would like to do research.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
I would say that, I mean.
I just wanted the insurance stand. The insurance private is what I would like to.
I would actually ask the person making the request, Paul. You could come with a request that we could actually meet, like if you came with a petition for us to add or something like that, we can't.
But it needs to be, but it needs to be added to a town meeting too.
Yeah. But at this time, I don't think the select board can make take any action on what you're requesting. So I don't think we need to add it to the agenda. I don't think we can do any.
Somebody moved to the state of it in October.
I said I would entertain a motion to table it. Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Paul, I'm favor. And I would ask Gail if you could do a little research for us. It would be, I think Kevin's particular concern is the cost of insurance and then what the. Um referencing Frank's um statute and then. You know, it it would be interesting on your list serve to find out how other towns have dealt with this. Because I believe many small towns eliminated the office as we did because of the changes in the requirements for training and insurance.
That's why the state is doing all the requirements because they want to get you the constables.
That's why we got this thing, letter.
Anything else on this item?
I think you need to. There's something on this. Report that we have to send to the council.
It says we don't have a constable. Says compliance track.
You can sign this town manager or select board chair.
Right, wouldn't we just? Say that we don't have a constable?
You know, and I called, that's what they told me to put in. That's two sides of the scene of use for some things. When I called them to say we didn't have law enforcement, they said if there was out and let them know that we don't have any law enforcement constables.
Thank you. Moving right along, um I see uh Rick Smersky has joined us and there's another number down there. I can't tell who that is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, is that?
So I couldn't get my audio to work on my computer, so the two, three, six, ninety, eighty eight is my cell phone, which I'm using for communication purposes.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't I didn't pick up on the earlier start time.
One moment, would you like to uh let Rick give us uh an update on the building even though we have passed that item? Yep, okay, go ahead, Rick. Um Eric's come and gone, but we'd love to hear what you have to say to us.
Absolutely sure. Um so as you probably have seen, the foundation is now in, the perimeter insulation is installed and Eric has done a. A mad stroke of business getting the um ground around it prepped and ready for uh construction. The building materials are scheduled to arrive on Monday, the nineteenth of this month. And the crew will be hot on its heels to get started with construction erection of the building.
And do you have a date for the crew or what does hot on the heels mean?
Um, it would be at at present, right now, I think it's the following Monday, but it could be sooner depending on if they can uh tap to Lucian and. That are in the mix ahead of it, but uh it wouldn't be any further that back than the following Monday.
Following Monday.
Twenty six.
Correct.
So not the week of the nineteenth?
No, the material's arrived. Planting Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, and we always bring it in a little ahead of the need so that the crew isn't waiting on delivery. There's always material on the ground ahead of the arrival and in advance of the need.
So you're looking at the week of the twenty six?
At present, that would be the latest, correct?
So anticipated completion would be approximately four mo- four weeks later?
I'm for the structure, yeah. We'll get the structure in and then um a lot of the work that's done after that by the trades, the plumbing, heating, electric. Those all take place after structure, but yes, the building structure itself is slated for um for week completion. And I would anticipate other week or so for the trade beyond that.
So if you were gonna give us a turnover date for the building, it would be approximately when?
Um, looking at a calendar here now, so. That puts uh one, two, three, four.
And we can October.
Yeah.
No, November.
First of November.
What you said.
So basically September delivers, we we work a week there and then we have the month of October. So it'd be early uh November one. Would be my anticipated completion.
Okay, you're being recorded, Rick, and it's in the minutes, just so you know.
Yeah.
They're calling for snow that week, Rick. Come on.
So uh Eric and uh Ron are gonna call you to help them put the chains in the plows on outside in the snow. The building's not done.
I will be gladly helpful for that.
All right, any questions for Rick?
Um, I have your check or you want to stop and pick it up tomorrow or you want me to mail it? This is Gail.
Um, yeah, I could make arrangements to swing by and grab it if that's convenient. What what hours would you be there?
If I'm not here, I'll leave it in an envelope between the two doors with your name on it.
Okay, that works.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, one last thing I wanted to mention, um in the essence of full disclosure, my uh. My thirtieth wedding anniversary was last year and we had booked a cruise to go away and COVID stopped that. So as all things happen, the timing isn't ideal, but I will be out of the area um the first week of the build, most likely October the fourth. Um, but I will be in contact with my team and I have uh made arrangements to have everybody. You know, brought to speed alert me to any needs and I'll do I'll do my best to keep tabs on the project while overseas.
And do you want to do like a kickoff meeting? Um, you know, when the crew starts and then I would request that you give us a phone number of of who. Will be standing in your place while you are away.
Yep, well, actually, as it happens with our company, the day to day operations are the responsibility of the crew foreman. He's like the superintendent. Um, so he's on site daily, so I'll definitely share that information with you. Um, but yeah, I I I would very much like to do a a pre-con so that we're all kind of in the same uh mindset and have. Uh like like minded goals to keep things going and avoid any unnecessary unneeded mistakes. So um I would say that would be post-delivery prior to the crew um in that nineteenth to twenty sixth window. And I can coordinate that with Eric and and you as well, Kathy.
Uh, yes, please. If you're um. Do you guys want to come? Because if you do, I'll have to warn it.
Um, no, I don't need to be there.
No.
Okay, yep, so um if you could in you can include everyone in the email and um. Eric and myself will attend and everyone else will know about it. And if anyone else plans to attend, please let Gail know so she can warn it. Um, I think you know this, Rick, but if more than one of us is together, if there are two select board members together, we have to warn it as an official meeting.
Is there a reason why? I mean, it's just.
No, it's just the fun, exciting thing that is starting.
But it's there's no.
There's no decisions to be made.
Have been made, yeah.
I don't believe there are any. Um, it's really to, as Rick said, like making sure everyone has contact information. Who to call if there's a problem, you know, what the chain of command looks like. You know, if he calls Eric and he can't get Eric and then he calls me and he can't get me, then. Yeah, you know, we we figure out what's going on and the same with if Rick's away, we just need to know who to call.
Definitely.
All right, well, happy anniversary plus one.
Thank you very much. Um, but that's all I have unless there's questions, I'd be happy to answer or. Did you well?
We all have our fingers crossed, Rick. So.
I hear you.
Yep.
I want.
Here we are, September.
Understood.
All right, sounds good.
All right. Thank you much.
We'll move on, financial reports. And we have for financial reports FY twenty two year end, always fun. And um starting with the special accounts, Gail has us the updates. Um, on all our special funds. Um, for some reason, Gail, my capital, my high equipment and matchers, so I'll get with you to figure out how to make those match. Um, I mean, we're all, you know, a hundred dollars, it's not a big deal. No, I added that in, so, yeah. Um, I think there maybe is another interest that. Yeah, I don't know. I start with one eighty five, nine seventy five, but I don't end with one twenty three, five seventy two. So just, so this is your first time through. What we're doing, Kevin, is we're looking at how we finish the fiscal year that ended on June thirtieth. And we have a number of special accounts that Gail manages and the this page will go in the town report. And this tells us how much money we had in each of these special accounts at the end of that year. And the one that I tend to track is that highway equipment fund because. Um, I'm gonna use the phrase capital planning, meaning we look forward and plan for when we're making purchases. So so I'm tracking that and inflating it and. You know, just kind of a double check on. Um, these numbers and then we have a plan as to when we make investments. The Capital Paving and Road Reconstruction Reserve Fund, which honestly I keep forgetting we even have.
And we started it because there are times we need to. Do some reconstruction and we didn't have anything to reserve. During reconstruction on in different places.
Right, so this is just something that. Um, we as a select board in parallel with Eric will need to. Remember as we're um going out to bid for paving. Because this was a big year, but normally, you know, we're right around a hundred thousand and this is another source of revenue. Capital building and repair is what we are using to build the building. The bond bank is the amount we have for the bond. And any questions on any of these other ones? What happens in the fish and wildlife account? Does that go to the state or is that something the town keeps?
Town gets a dollar and a half for each license I sell.
Yeah.
Don't spend that all once.
We draw it, so we have four hundred fifty three dollars, which is the town's money. At some point, you can stifle off a bunch of that.
It is there.
It's a separate account because they automatically come and get it and I wouldn't let them take money out of the.
Big account.
General.
Yep.
Checking.
Yep. Yep, yep. Um, reappraisal fund, do you have a reappraisal plan? Like when might that happen or?
Given the sales of things, probably it's gonna happen in the next three or four years. And now they're getting backed up. It might not hurt to try to wind up an appraiser.
Yeah. And how much does an appraisal cost? Do we know?
Uh, it could be a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars or.
So we don't. So we don't quite have enough, in other words. You said how much, two hundred a parcel is ninety thousand? Um.
But we get forty-three hundred dollars every year towards it.
Next.
It might not, and if the roosters help, it might not cost quite that much. The last two that we've done.
Is it time for a big one?
It's time for a big one.
Yeah, and just so you guys know, the reason she said it's time is that, um and do you wanna explain this? So um our town has appraised everyone at what we believe to be fair market value. And then the state monitors sales.
Yeah.
And they look at the difference between what the town has a house assessed for and what it sells for. And then this comes back to get you in the school taxes. Because your common level of appraisal is an equation that the town that the state does. Where they say, okay, you say your total brand list is X. But if you look at the most recent sales, you're actually only at seventy-five percent of what you should be. So then your school taxes get really impacted. And I think that every town is experiencing what we're experiencing, but we've had a number of really big ones.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
And it's a three-year rolling average, so I think to Gail's point, maybe that's, um you know, this this year that we're in. Um, there will be several.
Yeah.
And so that'll be one year of a three-year average. And by the time, if we have three years in a row like that, our CLA will drop enough that the state will tell us we have to. And so I think looking forward on that is probably a good idea.
So we're pretty close to that.
Yeah, well, and it also takes a year to do, right? I mean, it doesn't happen fast.
Somebody has to go visit any property.
Yeah.
Yeah, by the time that we're done, we might have enough money.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, one of the things we have to do at the last two towns was retire.
Um.
Seems for me to be good at what he did.
What was his name? Yeah.
Douglas McCarthy.
Douglas McCarthy, forever, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all seven me for the night?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to stay if you'd like, but not required.
Okay, I'll stay.
Get back to you.
Um, so property mapping, um I see your note, Gail, recommend annual update. And I will look to you to put that on the budget as you build the budget for next year.
Right, well, it's in the budget to set aside a thousand every year.
Yeah.
Cause we used to do it every other year, that's why we needed it in there, but at thirteen hundred bucks with this new company, I think it's better just to do it every year than you're gonna keep track of.
Yeah.
What year we're short three hundred and.
Yep, yep. Okay, um and then we get to the interesting part. Um, so at the end of the year, we have in our checking account three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. That's shown here on encumbrances and checking account, checkbook balance. And then if you look down for that list, all those items are special funds. Where the money is uh put aside and those are all the funds we just looked at on the prior pages. And that totals two thirty-five, nine oh eight, so the difference is sixty-seven oh seven, which is um. And that includes highway?
No, the highway.
Is separate.
Here, the thirty-eight thousand, the highways already set aside.
Got it, thank you. So at various times, we've talked about the fact that if you were to say, oh, great, we have sixty-seven thousand dollars left over. Let's put it in the budget and spend it, then you have no money for cash flow. And I'll remind you that our year starts on July one, but we don't start receiving tax revenues until August.
Yeah.
Fifteenth. So we try to keep, you know, I think at one point Stan said you should keep ten percent of your town budget for cash flow, which would be twenty thousand. Um, and that is just a rule of thumb. I think the point here is because we no longer budget for delinquent taxes. And we, per the recommendation of the auditors, and we have had some pretty big delinquent years. We're running balances, which is way better than being negative. Um, and then the question becomes, how do we wanna handle that? And um, in past years, well, I'll I'll share with you my rookie mistake. Hopefully you will learn from my rookie mistake, which was in my first set of years, we got really excited and we said, let's lower taxes. So let's say we said, okay, we're gonna take uh, you know, forty thousand dollars and we're gonna uh put it back to, we're gonna, you know, just put it towards taxes. So taxes would go down by forty thousand dollars. And it's about, one penny is about how much, Gail? Eight thousand, seven? So say it's eight thousand and if we did forty, that would be, so we would lower the tax rate by five cents.
Yeah.
And honestly.
Wasn't really worth it.
Something, well, I mean, that's real, right? But like, and so people would look back and say we lower it by five percent, but we have some inflation. So maybe the net lowering, maybe it goes up by three percent, so we save two percent, right? So we lower the taxes by two percent and people are like, oh, that wasn't a bad year. And then the next year, when you don't have that forty thousand dollars, you have to increase taxes by the forty plus whatever inflation is. And so poor Gail, or the treasurer, whoever that may be, sits here and people come in and they're like, what the heck happened? And she's like, don't you remember we lowered taxes last year and they don't remember and they're mad.
And we did it with the school as well as the town.
Yeah. So my personal recommendation and my personal philosophy as an elected official is that you never use one-time money to reduce your budget. There are lots of ways that you can support the town with that money through either some of these special accounts. Um, you know, the highway capital fund comes to mind, the building fund comes to mind. Um, or or you do a one-time expense that will not hit the budget the next year, so you're not impacting. And I I think I mentioned under that salt item, that's my concern with that, is that you're just gonna have to make it up in your file, ouch. Um, so that's just um the most important number for the town. And then the highway, it has thirty-eight, four sixty-two. And with the highway, looking at you to make sure I say this right, um we can, the money just rolls over and stays in the account. So what I had asked Gail to do last year, and it was a teeny weeny little money, so it made no difference, was that we show a fund balance at the beginning of the year of thirty-eight, four sixty-two. And that we will then um use that for budgeting. Um, and that.
And it's, I can say that it's higher this year because for the last four or five years, the budget has been big enough to absorb all of the expenses for public works.
Right.
And it's been thirty or forty thousand a year. So because this year the capital fund reimbursed for all of that, fifty thousand dollars, then that's why the the budget for highway would have had that much of a balance every year if we hadn't like covered the other costs.
I, I don't understand that because I thought we decided that we were gonna pay for all that engineering out of the annual budget and not reimburse.
We didn't reimburse, we reimbursed this year because it's on the town garage.
I'm sorry, what did we?
The last few years, we have not.
We have not, and what it sounded like you said was we went back and reimbursed for that, is that what you said?
No.
Okay, good.
You go back for three or four years.
Yeah, there was five thousand here, twenty thousand there, yeah.
For.
Right.
Stuff for that, getting up to the town garage.
Right.
That was not reimbursed by.
Right, so this is not something we need to deal with tonight, but it's something for you to start thinking about as we move into budget season, which is generally November, December, January.
And so the other thing to consider is if you've had a thirty-five thousand dollar budget surplus every year, you could be over budgeting.
Right.
That's right. That's one of the things you looked at when you bought again.
Right.
Which in this climate, over budgeting is not a bad thing, given how up and down prices can be.
Yep.
If you win, things are more relaxed, we can.
Yep, so if people wanna go through line by line on year end, we can, I think we just hit the summary. And I would suggest that you do that in preparation for budgeting.
Yeah.
In November, December. Okay. Anything you'd like to say now that I totally hogged that? Thank you, I'm very impressed. Here we are on September eighth, getting our.
Yes, you shouldn't have had.
This is a.
No.
Yes, but some years it's later than this, let's just leave it there. So this is great and yes, August would be lovely, but September's pretty darn good, so thank you. Um, so questions, concerns? Uh, we have uh time sheets and uh warrants. Questions, concerns? We don't have this month's financials, is that correct?
That is correct, but it's gonna happen today and it didn't some.
Okay. All right, well, a little good news. Um, warrants and orders, questions? If not, uh happy to accept a motion to accept the warrants and orders?
I'm gonna.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Um, progress on auditor recommendations?
So in reading that paperwork, there's a lot of things that the select board needs to think about. So I don't know when you wanna take time to do the models that the league has and what you.
I thought you were gonna present us with stuff.
Well, I can present you with the models, but they have three or four pages of instructions beforehand of what you need to consider and why you need to consider it.
Yep.
And I just don't know, you wanna deal with that or just wanna look at the models and sign off and say, I could support, have a good cash and see if it's how you do internal controls and this is how you do it.
Well, I thought you were gonna share those with the auditors because honestly, I would trust Sandy's opinion more than ours. Yeah, and if she could look them over and make her professional recommend, Sandy, Sandy is, I think is a CPA, is that true?
No, she works at the bank, Steve is a CPA.
Yeah.
Anyway, she's really smart about money.
Okay.
And she's one of our auditors, so if that's okay with you guys, I think that's a good step. And if we could.
She probably asked.
Accelerate this, Gail, because we're now on like year two of this process. Like having a report from Sandy next month would be awesome. And if that's unreasonable, I completely understand.
I'm surprised that she hasn't been in here trying to tidy up. You know, she comes in and prep everything for the months and they look at all that stuff and then once they they close this, they come in and they do the.
Yeah, well, did you call her and say, hey, it's actually done?
No, cause here's when she'll just show up on a Saturday morning and, you know, she creates all of these spreadsheets of the Anne and Vito go and look at and.
Yeah.
Sandy ties out all the.
Yep.
Intricate stuff.
Yep. Um, authorized bond bank requisition, and I I did read this, Gail. And what I got out of it is that we, um what you're asking for is for us to determine who will sign off on these. Um, basically, you can't, so we have whatever the total is, Gail showed us. And at some point, we will need to pull from that bond. And my best guess is that, you know, we had a total of about eight fifty, eight hundred fifty thousand between what we had saved and the bond, I think that's about right. And I think we're gonna come in, you know, at seven fifty, seven to seven fifty-ish. Um, so we will pull down quite a lot of that money, which is why it's really time to cross our fingers that we get that three hundred thousand dollar grant for the same shit. Um, but once we get, I mean, I think that the strategy is that we'll buy down our fund to an amount, and I don't think it's zero, I I'm open to suggestions, I don't really know, and then we'll start pulling from the fund. Um, and are we paying interest now?
Yes, we've paid interest on it.
Yeah, so it doesn't really matter when you take it, you're paying the interest anyway.
Have to send them copies of the, you know.
Requisition, yeah.
Because we've already.
Yeah. Yeah, so do you have a recommendation?
Including what we did tonight?
Uh, you can see that on the the thing that is in here. Do you have a recommendation, Gail, on how we pull that money?
No, this is standing here for me.
Yep, me too.
And I thought we needed to at least think about it and look at it and be prepared.
Yep.
I think we spent, we spent ninety-two and we had what, three hundred and twenty-six.
Yep.
So.
Right, we'll definitely, do we know how long it takes for this money to come through? That could be a good question. Um, you know, we were pretty good at paying our bill. Um, that we just got, but there's probably something in our contract that gives us so many days to pay and we'd hate to miss it because we didn't realize it takes six weeks to get a requisition or.
And I think that might affect the time it takes is gonna affect your number that you wanna be at before you start rolling from that.
Well, I think we probably do wanna pull some down now.
Right, yeah, right, but.
And is it making interest where it's sitting wherever it is?
No, there's no reason we should be in there.
Maybe we just pull it all down.
Well, I think we have, I think we have to give them.
Heads up.
Invoicing or, you know, something.
Right. Um, I think I handed that back to you, what's that invoice say? How much have we paid them? I think we paid them three seventy-one. The thing I just signed.
And that's including tonight, the tonight's.
We pay a total of six seventeen, we paid ninety-two and a hundred and seventy-seven.
So we could pull that amount down.
We could go.
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Um, and we need to authorize who's going to sign.
I would make a motion that we authorize select board chair.
Uh, or the treasurer, do we need two signatures? I think you gave me more pieces of. Yeah, I think somewhere in my pile here.
I remember just seeing that one that already had your name on it.
That's the one insurance, so.
Yeah, no, you gave me more pages.
I gave you more than what I put in the package.
Yes.
But I didn't think you guys were gonna read all pages.
Oh.
Yeah, but that's why I'm confused, cause it doesn't look the same. Okay, so on the first page, this is the requisition number, this is the signature, this is the title, this is the requisition. And then there's this automatic money market investments, investment authorization. Yeah, appointment of authorized representatives. Here it is, I blank a duly authorized official of blank, do hereby certify the filing have been authorized and are authorized to act on behalf of the governmental unit, that's the town, in matters relating to its loan from the Vermont Municipal Bond Banks twenty seventeen series three bonds. All right, so um, I'll sign this, I, Kathy Reynolds. Sure, do we need? I think just one, actually. So, Gail Fowler, I believe we're appointing you as town treasurer, yes? Yes?
Will we sign it? Sure, yes.
I mean, we could write all your titles, but um, and if, I think we need a second, just.
I would.
In case.
Say you.
So we'll make it me as an alternate. Wonder if you can appoint yourself?
Well, I made a motion to appoint you already.
Yeah. It's just that eighth day of September two oh two two, and you have to sign this, Gail. All right, so um I uh would appreciate a motion to authorize Kathy and Gail as the signatories and to approve having Gail pull down the full amount of our payments to Morton to date, which is whatever it is.
I will make that motion.
That looks like a.
All in favor?
Bye. Hello? I didn't even sign. A specimen signature.
Specimen signature. And then, yeah, there were some other, all right, but we did that. What about starting at six is that, you know, it's only seven thirty.
I know.
We're pretty far down. Uh, anything else on financial? All right, old business, follow. All right, old business. Follow-up list review. You didn't include it. Do folks want to look at the follow-up list? I feel like we look at the follow-up list. And then we go, oh, boy. We did, I know. So, Gail, if you could put it on the agenda for next time and include it in the packet. And ideally get it to us early, we could all look at the. Maybe take some things away. All right, moving on to new business, National Flood Insurance Program.
Now that we've actually voted. Amendments. You guys have to sign yet another resolution. Saying you all participate in the program. And then Catherine and I have to sign.
Thought we did that already.
Sign it.
Voted for it, but as part of the process.
This makes it official.
Yes, this was first signed by the select board back in two thousand and twelve or something. So ten years later, we're finally getting around to. I think this is the last step. This, she still has to submit it to the state in FEMA and the no. Designate, we won't be one of the one towns in the state that doesn't have flooding insurance.
Yes, yeah, flood mitigation. Great.
And it's nice of Stephanie to walk us.
Okay, check. Point to zoning board of adjustment members. So we have a piece of paper in here.
So we work for. Interdiction and Duncan Wood John. And so, go through. Emails that I got from people that are interested. And I can advise that in the past, we've had an alternate because sometimes when an application comes to the board. There are neighbors that are involved or relatives that are involved, like. We haven't always been able to get a form. So I know at one point Stan Wilber was the alternate. Had a lot of it involved.
Do we have? People on the board now who have canceled, Marley?
Jerry Johnson. And right now there are two members of the planning commission on.
And who are?
Bob Lloyd and Vito.
Got it. Okay, so we have emails from Todd, Michael and Ed here.
And. Most towns go into executive session to talk about something like that.
We could.
Could we? Added to the end and do it.
We could. Todd, were you here to see how this came out? Thank you. Yes, I don't know if you heard Gail suggesting, because there are three personalities that we do that in executive session. And I think we could do that now if you'd like to wait, or we typically do executive session at the end. And then we go into the other room and anyone who wants to wait waits and then we come out and we make. Our motion to do whatever decision has been made in the executive session. So if it's important to you. Correct, yep.
You can wait and do everything at once.
Okay, thank you. So we will, I'll make a motion that we deal with that in executive session at the end of the meeting. Because it involves personnel. Yep, and I think we'll have to make a motion to go into executive session. So all in favor, I, but that was sort of redundant, sorry. Fund balance discussion, which I kind of jumped the gun on. I think you had some specific suggestions on that, Gail. Did you want to talk about those? The fund balance? I kind of stole your thunder, sorry.
But now I'm looking for the other page of the flood insurance. Thank you.
Sorry, yep. I love that health insurance is on here in September. Good job.
Well, I don't have any numbers for you.
It's too early. I don't think they'll give you numbers yet, right?
But it has gone up substantial, but I wanted us to have it in our head before.
Right.
December got here and it was too late for my decision.
Yeah, I think the enrollment period is this narrow little window, right? And they should tell you what the costs are prior to that. Yep.
I just wanted. It's a tickler.
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, the fund balance discussion, I think you probably already had it was. You know, cash flow or do you want to take some of that sixty-seven thousand and tuck it into a special fund? You know, do you want to leave the role over that whole thirty-eight thousand into the highway? Spend that this next year.
Yep, and for highway, we don't have to vote it. But if we, for the sixty-seven thousand, we have to put it in front of the voters and say, will the vote, you've seen that before, will the voters authorize moving? You know, last year we did something eighteen thousand from the fund balance to fund a portion of the Culver project on Fodder's Brook. And that was passed by the voters. So we could do that, you know, I think Gail and I talked about this and if. We wanted to do something, we have two opportunities to vote, November and March.
Right.
And if there was, you know.
Do we have anything out of the ordinary coming up that we do need to? Fund transfer.
Well, Gail's gonna give us some really expensive estimates for wiring. For one.
And if you look at the bottom of the report.
The special accounts, yeah.
On the special accounts for the building, it's. The town garage. And of all the other town buildings with thirty-six thousand.
Right, and.
Estimate that I got for the electrical just. Thousand or two dollars. Forty-eight and fifty-six and.
Yeah.
Ten thousand.
Well, that's why we have a special fund.
Right. So. When this says the general share is thirty-six and the highway share is two ninety, it's not the town garage, it's all the highway buildings. So when we were talking last month about repairs to the existing town garage and I said, we don't have a budget. That's because I have in my brain that like we have to just build this town garage first. Before we spend more money. So that could be another thing that we could take some of that highway money and I think there were like. Fix the roof and some doors and then we didn't get a price on painting, potentially painting and. You could go to the other side of the table and I could ask you if you care about the painting as the guy who looks at it more than. You and your brother look at it more than anyone else, just by your proximity.
Oh.
Yes. There you go.
I stand here.
Yeah, it's a nice break.
Stand, oh, feels good.
So we, we didn't really, and this isn't on the agenda, so we're not gonna make a decision, but I think the conversation is helpful. Because I think Gail was advocating that we take care of that building, which, you know. It's, it's big. We can put things in it and we own it. So let's take care of it.
Place it, it's gonna cost you five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, no, probably more.
It is a, it is a good cold storage building.
Yeah. I, I would say like. Town should not have storage, but if we have, so let's take care of it.
We got all these school desks we need to put somewhere.
Where are you putting this school desk? Yeah.
Nelson knows somebody that just did a restoration of an old schoolhouse and they spent a lot of money. Finding old desks like that. So if we keep one or two of these out now, then.
There you go.
Right.
I ask you the question and you can answer or not, up to you.
Okay.
About, you know. I would like to have your opinion as a painter, number one, and then as a neighbor, number two, neither of which is your role as landlord, so. You could speak to both or.
Well, I mean.
Or neither.
If. We're gonna have the new building.
Yes.
It would be nice to have the old building look. Nice.
Better.
I don't, I don't mean to butt, I don't mean to butt in here, but you worried about the budget for me for insurance? You're about painting an old building? I mean, come on.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. We're, we're not taking more comments at this point, but.
Of course you're not.
So. Money-wise. To paint that, I figure it's around seventy-five hundred.
I thought that was just for the paint. No, seventy-five hundred is the job.
Yep.
And that was multiple coats you had talked about.
Yep.
What does that look like?
Three prime.
Re-prime.
Cause of rust.
Yep.
Then three color.
And you would spray it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that includes labor, that includes everything.
And then whatever, I think the crew had agreed to do. I think it's two people doors. The one that you see looks for.
So.
That's for sure.
So there's. The one that's towards me.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna.
Oh, and then there's.
Right. I think there's one on the.
One on the other. Yes, yeah, going out, yes.
Yeah, I think those are, I mean.
They're fine.
Okay, they look.
Doors are fine, these need to be.
You might want to just check that they're not rusted through on the bottom or.
The other one's so far up off the ground, I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, just.
So I mean.
I trust you, but let's check.
Right, no, yeah.
Well, and the.
And then you're replacing the two. Doing something with them two rear sliding doors.
I don't think we approved that.
Eric wanted him to go sideways or no, he wanted him to go up and down because now the rest of us.
He gave us like the what needs to be done. Like to maintain the building.
Right.
Like integrity for the short term and long, you know, those doors. Aren't affecting the buildings. They should be replaced at some point, but they're.
Yeah, one smashed up.
And did he want like overhead doors or he wanted to hire someone?
Right now they slide it. Inside one.
Yeah, they, yeah, they slide, yes.
Yeah, there's like this much space on either side, but a darn trucks. Yeah, it's crazy.
Yes.
We'll have smaller equipment in there.
Right. All right, so, so that would be one potential. Thing to consider.
That's fun. I figured seventy-five hundred-ish now. I don't know.
Are you saying that you're not gonna lock in a price and you're not willing to commit to a price?
Buy the paint now and keep it in your basement.
No. No.
Yeah. No, we need a number for a budget and then we can go up the business. If we decide to do that, but that is. One thing that comes up for me. On the, on the highway side. And.
Yep.
We budget now. Five thousand dollars a year. I don't have a budget. Oh, wait, do we do have a budget? What does it go? Five thousand for general buildings? And five thousand for. Looking, sorry.
We budget.
Fifteen.
Highway and then is another thousand for. Capital.
Repair.
Repairs.
Annual repair, yep.
And the general budget, budget's twenty-five hundred a year. For the capital fund, a thousand dollars.
Fifteen hundred for building repair on the town side. And what's it called? Oh, building repair, there it is. Twenty-five hundred, yep, so it's twenty-five hundred annually, which takes care of. The old firehouse, this building, that shed and potentially the creamery. We haven't officially done that. And then the town side, the five thousand will be the new town garage, the old town garage and eventually the transfers, transfer station.
That five thousand is what goes into the.
Fund.
Capital fund.
Right.
There's another line for actual building repairs.
Which is.
Which is for highway with. Thousand bucks. The general it's.
The general was fifteen.
Fifteen hundred because we have, we knew we had to do some things.
Yep.
And then it's twenty-five hundred dollars to the end of them.
Yep.
To the two separate things.
And there's, it's a total of five? Is that that, that five number you were saying is broken down into that? Separate things?
No.
The five thousand just goes into the capital fund.
Right, and you actually are calling it here salt sand shed fund. Line thirty-six. On highway. You could change this to highway buildings.
So am I still in this roller?
You talked about, I heard you talk about it as a painter and a neighbor. Is there anything else you'd like to add? You're welcome to come back and show us that. We are not making a decision if you. You know, I do think that in, you know, once the town garage is done and, you know. Changing out the doors would be a good thing for the crew to do. If however that's gonna be done, so. We could make that happen. Anything else on the fund balance? Okay, warning for November election regarding the right-of-way. We may want to talk about that after the executive session. Okay, we'll move that down. Health insurance twenty twenty-three. I think you might have been in the other room, but. It's really good to see this pop up. We need to make sure we negotiate that and we budget for that appropriately. And last year we were a little behind. Was it last year or the year before? We were a little behind the eight ball and it was not good. So this year before, so this is good. We're gonna be good this year.
And who, who does that negotiating?
It's not really negotiating, like Gail gets a price and then. When we, one year we had one company and we were like, oh my gosh, and then we worked with someone who said, oh, another company would be cheaper. Frank had somebody, yep, and then we, the negotiating part is we went to our employees and said. You know, gee, here's this policy and here's that policy and would you be okay if we switched and. So that's really the negotiating and what we try to keep our employees whole. As best we can. We do offer a very generous health insurance plan and. Several years ago, gosh, I bet it was about five now, there was a very large. Effort. I took the minutes and it was like. Two or three pages of minutes at every meeting because we had really professional people from the healthcare industry on that committee. Which was really looking at. Our personnel policy specifically around health insurance. And what came out of that, which doesn't tie us to it, but the, the philosophy that came out of that was. The people who work for this town give of themselves and are asked so much of themselves. For like, you know, the road crew, like after hours work and, and you know, think about Gail who gets called for everything between here, there and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that we. You know, there was a big conversation about like they should pair, pay a portion and when it goes up, they should cover that and you know. If you keep doing that year after year after year, eventually your employees are paying a lot of money. And so we agreed at that time that we would cover one hundred percent of the cost. And we have done that since, I believe. But part of the way we do that is that we. Try to get a comparable policy.
Right.
And Gail hit Medicare age, which. We cover her Medicare and her, you know, her supplemental and her payments. And so she's made whole, but it did save the town a lot of money.
And what about after?
With the, what happened with the road crew. I mean, at one point we went to an HSA. Which they've got money every year and then the board changed and. The board said, wow, we don't have employees getting the money, the town people. Goes to an HRA, which is a reimbursable thing.
Okay.
And what we did two years ago was we went to a higher deductible. But we told the road crew we would keep them. They're out of pocket, which was eighty-one hundred dollars a year. We would pay that if they, if they needed it. And so far it's been, you know, we helped them, they have needed it, but given that Ronnie was in the hospital. A couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Who's gonna have some expenses that are gonna come out of that, but.
So what about?
If you went to the emergency room and then stayed in the hospital. If you went to the emergency room and then stayed in the hospital for a few days, we probably hit it. Yeah, it's amazing how fast it goes.
So what about after retirement?
After retirement?
What town employee retires?
You get nothing.
Then they get, well, they get nothing for health insurance, we do have a, um. Uh.
We get retirement.
Retirement.
The town pays in and employee pays in for.
Right, right.
Pension retire.
Mm-hmm.
But health insurance we get nothing.
Right, and what tends to happen is that either. You are sixty five and you go on Medicare.
Right.
Or you stop working and your income drops and then you, um, go on the exchange. And if you don't work at all, you're eligible for Medicaid and if you work some, you get a subsidy and. So that has been a real change from, you know, twenty years ago when if you lost your health insurance, you were just like.
I just didn't know how it was handled, you know, I mean, obviously corporation. Gee, you retire, your healthcare stays intact, I just.
Guess what, by the way, there are so few companies like that now, like even the federal government doesn't work that way. Even the federal government doesn't work that way, so that is very, very rare. You know, I work for a private nonprofit, I pay one hundred percent of what my, no, I, I get. Pay, I get a hundred percent of my insurance. Which I have the privilege of paying a five thousand dollar deductible. For the first, I pay the first five thousand and then twenty percent of the next ten, so I'm out seven thousand dollars. And I pay a hundred percent of my family plan, so they pay for me and I pay for the rest and the day I quit is the day my benefit ends. So the world has gotten much harsher and, you know, gee, gee's a well-paying unionized plant, so it's a little different there, but. That is very, that is very rare.
And it's. Greg Casey worked, when he was on the board, he worked for the city of Rutland. And so he had insurance for himself when he retired and for Tina that continued. And so when we first brought him up to the board, he agreed to it and then the next month he came back and said, nope, you can't do it.
Right, right.
Cause he was used to. Used to it happening that way and he said, no, we're not gonna do that, so that's when Hollis got squeezed out.
Yeah. Yep. Uh, feedback forms?
No.
Members' concerns.
Uh, so hi, this is Nancy and mine is just a follow-up actually on last month's feedback form. Um, I posted the first month of meeting recording and it, you know, I. Went up well and so I'll keep going. But we didn't, or I don't think I confirmed with you all whether this wants to be public or whether we wanna keep it private.
Can you explain what that means?
So right now, well, it's not private, it's unlisted, right now, the first month's recording is on YouTube, but it's unlisted. So the only access to it. Is with the link that's now on the town website. So folks can't go into YouTube and. Search for the Tinmouth Select Board meeting, they won't find it. If it was public, the channel would, you could find the Tinmouth Vermont channel, you could see the videos available. As the month's recordings show up. So it, it makes no difference to me, folks, it's still. Accessible, it's an extra step to go to the website to. Get the, to click on the link.
We know how Mill River does it.
Mill Rivers is public. And, and Wallingford's is public and Danby's is public.
I don't see any reason to not make it public because it's public information and. I, I would assume that we would want to make it as available as we can.
That's how I feel.
Alright, so am I taking that as the decision?
Um, Kevin went to the restroom, um, we could wait till he comes back in case he has a strong opinion, one way or the other. Um, thank you for doing that, Nancy, have you gotten any feedback or has anyone mentioned it or?
Um, Sherry actually got fun feedback. Can I share it, Sherry? Um, Sherry got feedback that somebody who viewed it said that Kim goes to the refrigerator too often. But otherwise, uh, it, it's just fun to see that it has been viewed. Um, not a lot, but it has been viewed, so I thought for the first couple of months, I'll just put something on front porch forum saying. It's up and the next, this month's is up and available and just to get people in the routine of looking if they'd like to.
Yep. Thank you. We could just vote, but.
I know, he has a stronger opinion about than these are this one.
Okay, alright, we waited for you.
Thank you.
So the question is, Nancy, uh, just reported on.
Yeah.
How she's handling the videos.
Yes.
So, um, other towns have them. Public, which means if you said to yourself, I wanna go find out what happened at the select board meeting, you could Google on YouTube, you could say Tinmouth Select Board and it would come up. Right now she has it so that. It doesn't come up that way. So both Meadow and I suggested that it would be fine to have it. Public, which means you could Google Tim Miss Lefford and hit it rather than having to go to our website. Find the meeting, find the link and then go there. You, you would be able to do both if we make it public.
I'm, uh.
Yep, great, okay, anybody wanna make a motion?
Whatever makes me an internet sensation.
You got that, it's the only requirement.
Motion we make, Kevin.
Kevin, internet sensation, gotta work on your TikTok list.
I make a motion that we.
Make it public, I think.
Yeah, make the meetings public.
And I'll second that, all in favor.
Bye.
Hi, thank you, Nancy.
Okay, thank you for, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, you know, jumping ahead of anything, so thank you very much.
Yes, alright, we have some miscellaneous correspondence. Primmer, Piper, Revermont, Tell Certificate of Publica, ooh, I did not read this.
Oh, and I just gave you the cover pages. Twenty pages, but.
And what are they?
They're just thinking we're not there. Certificate of Public Good. Renewing, so. They don't wanna hear any of this.
We'll take it under advisement, in other words.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think everybody likes having fiber optic and.
Except for the battery thing.
Well, I don't know what we could do about the battery thing.
Kinda too late now, isn't it?
I think Kingsbury tried to do something. In the legislature and the public service board and I don't.
So they took it under advisement?
Hmm, well, there's a lot of cable companies, you know, we don't wanna deal with. Batteries. And at one point you're supposed to be able to go to. Graybar and buy the backup batteries and somebody would get there, well, we don't sell those, we can't do that. He's like, wait, you tell, said you had to, we called detail and this is where they said to come get these batteries and. I don't know how it got resolved because I haven't heard about anybody trying to get one lately.
Right, that was.
But I knew that, I do know they wear out and.
Yep.
They run out.
Yep. Alright, um. Are we ready to enter executive session?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we enter executive session to discuss appointments to the zoning board of adjustment and a real estate purchase and sale agreement.
I'll second that.
Right, um, we are going to the other room. There's no, no one in our audience right now, but we would request that no one. Touch the owl. And if you guys leave while we're gone, goodbye, thank you for coming. Oh, do you wanna come in to?
Uh, let me just turn the recording off for a minute, yep, otherwise it'll be dead air and everybody will think. We will be coming back and the recording just.
Sorry. I make a motion, we come out of executive session.
I second that motion.
All in favor, I. Okay. Who wants to make a motion about the zoning board of adjustment?
I will make an emotion that we appoint Todd Dennis and Ed Hasnar to the board and appoint Michael Fowler as an alternate.
I will second that motion, any discussion?
None.
Uh, all in favor?
I.
I. Are you voting, are you abstaining?
No. So.
We voted.
We voted, you didn't say I.
I.
You can say nay, whatever you want, yeah. Sorry, sorry, um, and regarding the real estate, who would like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we appoint, that we authorize Gail to. Um, move forward with getting a purchase and sale agreement.
For a right of.
For the. Purchase of a right of way.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I.
I. Um. Any other business before we talk about our next meeting, um. We have been, this is our second month of meeting once a month and I would suggest we. Continue to try to meet once a month, um, do you wanna try to start earlier? Like, like, we started at six tonight and it's eight thirty, which gets people home earlier, which is good, I suppose.
No, six would be good.
Six, six thirty, how about folks on the phone, you have an opinion about our start time?
I like earlier.
Okay, I think we do too, it turns out, it's, it makes for a long day for Gail, we're gonna be bringing our peanut butter and jelly or something. Any other feedback?
Okay, a different board used to bring pizza when we had meat early. Frank would stop and pick up pizzas and.
Maybe we can get.
Wow, I missed that.
For us now.
I know.
High standard being.
I know, um, so our next meeting will be Thursday, October thirteen at six thirty and I better change my calendar. What's the preference, six or six thirty, if we made it six thirty, would you have time to go home?
I would not go home.
Are you sure this is okay?
Even at six thirty, it still doesn't give her enough time, so six is.
Well, wait, she's supposed to close at five, that gives her an hour and a half.
Supposed to.
Supposed to, yeah, I hear you.
On one hand, the times I've been out here at five o'clock in the last ten years.
Oh, man.
Sorry.
Um. And you're gonna have a little brief meeting on Thursday the twenty ninth at five o'clock.
Um, let's put it tentative, yep.
To sign one with the team.
Yes. Um, so let's get this on the counter, edit all events.
So you're gonna be here, I thought you were gonna be one of them.
The twenty ninth?
Yeah.
No, I'm here the twenty. Here the twenty nine. Um. Wait, one sec, October, this is at. Oh my goodness, what goes wrong?
So there were a couple of other things I was gonna talk to you about.
Yep, that's fine, I think we, oh, okay.
One is. I. Dispersed the. Mister Education. We were only supposed to send it, spend it for the education and the state has stopped keeping track of that and we now provide it. Someone advised the. Our advisors on the P D R. I would split it between. Listers had to spend. More time this year and move some of it into the.
Reappraisal fund.
So that's not gonna show up anymore.
So that just goes away?
That goes away.
Hmm.
And the. Four hundred and sixty nine dollars that the. Citizen participation committee has had since two thousand thirteen. I don't know if you mind just pull that into the general fund or what you wanna do.
Uh.
Participation committee, but we don't have to decide tonight, but that's.
Is the cit, the citizen participation committee was. Similar to some of the goals of equity and inclusion, which does not currently have a budget, is that true?
And so I think I said the inclusion should come and ask the select board. Okay, if they have something that they can spend it on.
And the thought about, um.
That would be in this this year, not in the last this year.
Yep, and the thought about updating the. Owner's manual is to not print it. That's the question, is it to print it or is it to not print it?
I don't know, I haven't been a part of, I'm not on that, uh.
So.
Working group.
Yeah.
Sherry is.
Are you listening, Sherry?
Yes.
So, um, the. We have about five hundred dollars in a fund that was set aside for a committee that used to be called.
Sorry, citizens.
Citizens Participation Committee and we're, we no longer have that committee, so I was saying perhaps equity and inclusion could use that. And perhaps equity inclusion would like to ask for it and then I ask, is the plan? For the updated owner's manual to be to print it or to have it just electronic?
We have, I don't think we've decided, we'll probably wait till we're closer to being done.
Okay.
But maybe. Maybe not, maybe electronic and printing some, I don't know, that would make sense.
Yep. Um, and if you could just jot down for someone, whoever's updating the library, the Imagination Library Program. Has never been in there before and could be, it's for.
If you write a little blurb and send it to me, I'll put it in.
Alright, but now I have to remember to write a little.
I'll remind you, I'm a nag, I'll remind you.
Remind me, great.
Yeah, sure.
What was that, Kevin?
What?
He said, he said, she's really good at reminding you.
I didn't, I didn't say nothing, exactly what I said.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anything else? Uh, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Bye.
I. Right now, I need to fix my calendar.
Before he blows the gas bill.
Thank you all. Thank you, good night.